Hey, everyone. If you could please sign in at the list at the end of the table, that would be very helpful for them. And I'm sort of multitasking here tonight, so please bear with me. If we could please stand and start the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for attending this meeting, so we will speak to the items on the agenda. The first item is recommendation of ordinance regarding tax bills and excess payments less than $5 to refer to the special town meeting for approval. Just so you know, in the past, Fran has done this, it is in the statute. So we just thought it would be cleaner to actually have it on our books as an ordinance, so that there wouldn't be any question that it was allowed to be done. So Gina, Bob and I had approved this last week, but I thought as a courtesy, we'd bring it forward to have you onboard to approve it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, so do you want to actually make the motion to refer to the town meeting?
Sure, I'll move to refer to the town meeting.
Bob? I second the motion.
Okay, I've tried to explain it, any other comments or questions? All in favor of referring it to the town meeting? Perfect. Next one is discussion of possible action recommendation to authorize the first select woman to work at the butters of property gifted and now owned by the town to a special meeting for approval for the transfer. We are going to be working with the butters of the lot to the left is non-conforming. The lot to the right has a setback issue that needs to be resolved. So by taking this gifted property and we divide it appropriately, it will relieve the setback issue with the property owner to the right, and it will actually give a conforming building lot to the resident to the left. So I just need the authority of the town to work with any necessary documentation in order to make that switch. And then it will relieve the town of the property, and it will allow increased revenue for however it is assessed with that separation to those abutting owners. Was I clear enough on that? I know what it sounds like in my head, and I just want to make sure everybody understands it with me. So I just need a motion to refer that to the town, so that we can move that forward.
Well, I just want to say, we've talked about this, so I think I understand. I was just wondering, is there any is there any downside to the town gifting the property to the two neighbors?
I can't think of anyone, because I think it gives the person to the left a conforming lot, which they can either now put an appropriate house on, and we would then get the tax revenue from whatever's built on that property, and it gives them a larger lot to work with. Because right now, you have two non-conforming lots right next to each other, and they really
Actually, you have three now.
Well, with Mr. Rico, so it will give him his proper setback, because right now, he's got sheds and things that are literally right on his property line. And I see Mr. Rico, he passed away, but his wife is still willing to work with the town in order to give the appropriate setback.
For this property?
This is on, well, I call it Old Litchfield, Litchfield turned up near Anne Drive.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Eight twenty-nine, I think.
Eight twenty-nine is gifted, eight eighteen is the one that's actually the non-conforming. It actually has, if you've driven on Old Amity in that section, there is an old house with a blue tarp that's on the roof. It's been there for years, and I mean years. So, and I think there might actually be an abandoned truck in the backyard. But, so this would help that property owner to now have a conforming lot, and Captain, there's no public comment.
Okay, there's a question asked, so I would like to ask a question too.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. How much does the property worth? What's the fair market value of it? What are the adjacent property owners paying for it?
Well, right now, we haven't established that. I need to be able to discuss with them. And, you know, we may sort of convey it to them, because it will be to the benefit of the town when it's assessed and then taxed, we will gain revenue from it.
So can I get some free land to deal with my drainage issue?
I'm sorry, can you get what?
Some free land to deal with the drainage issue on my property?
That's another, that's another issue, that's not on the agenda tonight. So, uh, that's what we're looking to do.
So you're saying that the town will benefit from additional tax revenue from each of those?
Correct, once it's assessed accordingly and added to those pieces of property.
And if I may also add, currently, you have three lots next to each other, they're all non-conforming.
We've established that.
But.
Bob, please sign in.
The middle lot that was gifted to the town is a pre-existing non-conforming building lot. So by taking this action, what we're doing is re-establishing these two lots into present-day conformance with our zoning regulations. So the benefit to the town is you're extinguishing a pre-existing non-conforming building lot that does not meet current zoning regulations, and you're establishing two new parcels, one to the right, one to the left, both what now will conform to at least size and setback requirements of today's zoning laws.
Okay, and do you have like a ballpark net gain?
A thousand dollars.
A year?
Yeah, I asked that of the assessor, the point two will be, I think it's three, and this is all going to vary depending on the mill rate and the assessment, but it'll be $300 on the point two and $700 on the point seven.
And those are
And currently, delinquent, and the current owner has no intention of paying them. So if they remained delinquent, the only option would be to foreclose, and you'd be collecting on hundreds or thousands of dollars at an expense of, you know, a couple thousand dollars.
And I think you've said this already, but I was just wanting to be clear, each of the neighbors have agreed to them?
Well, I haven't confirmed, the owner of the, I think it's eight eighteen, the one with the blue tarp. That is an older woman, have been dealing with her daughter, and I haven't gotten confirmation that that property owner is on board at this time, but the Ricky's, Rickos, they are on board.
Okay, the eight forty-one.
Yes.
I mean, the daughter, the daughter of the woman seemed enthusiastic, optimistic about it, but it was just she had to have that conversation with her mom, so.
So, okay, so, um, it's been a while, I mean, we've been talking about this for a few months, I'm sort of surprised that we don't have an answer from eight nineteen.
It's like telephone tag kind of thing, so yeah.
And because of her age, I haven't spoken to her directly, I've only spoken to her daughter, but it sounds like there's a confusion or misunderstanding. She thought, you know, she was concerned about this, what this was going to cost her by way of additional taxes. And so, particularly when I'm dealing with someone who's older, I tend to, you know, not be, not press the issue and go at their speed.
Be patient, okay. And I'm curious to know what the plan would be if the response from eight nineteen is negative.
As a matter of recommendation, there's really, having that as public property is no great benefit to the town, you know, having these little parcels here and there. But if the answer is no, my recommendation is correct, continue with the point two. The town would then have a point seven, would eliminate the pre-existing non-conforming building lot, so you protect against that. And a future owner of eight nineteen interested in that acquisition at that time, and, you know, we could address it at that time, but it would just sit there at single open space.
Okay, and just, I really, I think for the benefit of everyone at the meeting today, is there it's almost an acre of land, right, that is going to be gifted or proposed to be gifted?
Point nine.
Point nine, right? So there's no benefit for the town keeping that property?
You know, that's a policy issue, you know, I represent a number of different towns, and most towns are where you have open space that connects to existing open space, towns are in favor of that. But to have live these little pockets, these swaths of point, you know, point nine, point five, they become just, no one knows that it's public land, you know, it's not anything for the public. So you're preserving it for purposes of vistas and views, you know, kind of maintain the character of the neighborhood rather than for public use.
Because it doesn't above any other open space, it's around its five.
Right.
You know, other properties.
And if you're looking at your town holistically, from a zoning perspective, that's the benefit, that's the real benefit. So, you know, you know, it's, you know, as a matter of open space, as a matter of public use, it's really bringing properties into conformity with your zoning regs.
So you couldn't have a town resident say, oh, you want to give this property, I'll take it and build a house there?
Well, that you could, right, but the, one of the reasons to take the gift was to prevent building on a previous non-conforming lot.
And allow the, it might be a butter to potentially possess a conforming lot, so that they could, even if they wanted to sell it at whatever the market value is, they're going to get more for it as a conforming lot than they were as a non-conforming.
Right, if this, if the point eight rebuilds into a modern house, you'll get substantially greater taxes than you currently get.
Okay, so, any other?
I should have made the motion, and then start discussing it.
Yeah, I think we did it backwards a little bit, but.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
But I did have one thing, I think before it goes to the town meeting, the wording should be clarified, because the way it says here, recommend the first select woman to work with the butters gifted and now owned by the town, it's not clear to me, I think the intent is that after the town meeting, if it gets approved, the first select woman is authorized to sign deeds conveying the property in any division at no cost to the people. But the word here is work with.
Well, right, so what the intent is to get town meeting approval to convey municipal land to butters, you know, and authorize the first select woman to sign any associated.
So we will, we'll make sure make it a little clearer on that.
I think that's a really good suggestion.
Okay, that's, that's easy.
I'm not really sure what you mean by, you know, backwards, did you want to make the motion and then have a discussion?
Well, that's how you're supposed to do it, yeah, but that's
All in favor? Okay, and we will work on the rewording. Okay, the other, in your packet, I gave you wording for the two options that were approved at last night's Board of Finance meeting. And these are the two options that we would look to potentially refer to the town meetings, or the town to, so this, is that the packet or just the?
This is just the agenda.
I've got some other ones here with the These options, like I said, unfortunately, I was not able to be at the meeting last night, but I worked with Sharon Hudson this morning to make sure that I had the correct wording on it. And for those who do not have a copy, I will read what it says. Option one would be at a cost of $181,970, restore full funding to the lines impacted by the original single stream proposal with additional funds required to account for increased disposal costs for items brought to the recycling center. That is option one. Option two is at a one-year cost of $340,071, restore funding for full operations at the recycling center, and add the additional cost for curbside single stream recycling. The intent of the hybrid approach is to reduce municipal solid waste, and in parentheses, it says trash and recyclables picked up at curbside, while giving a year to gain hard numbers on the effectiveness of each option, and to research a potential buyers of glass and cardboard brought to the recycling center. So these are the two options that we are looking to refer to the town meeting in order for the townspeople to give me one second, for the townspeople to vote, yes, you want?
Just one comment, in the center of the sheet where it just says restore budget proposal, that was not really a proposed option, and we have
You're talking about this sheet?
Yes, because you provided it, and that's the 213,601, that's just the amount that was removed originally from the Okay. And that was just for comparison to the 181 and the 340, okay?
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, somebody want to make a motion in a second, then we can discuss. So you're asking for a motion to send both of these actions?
To refer both options to the town meeting.
Sure, I'll make that motion. Okay, and Bob? So we can discuss?
Yeah, you can second it.
Okay, for discussion, okay.
And my discussion was to let all know, I think because of the, we left the last town meeting, the direction of the majority of people was they took single stream, the numbers were single stream out of their budget, and they wanted to put money in for recycling center, and keep up, and they were told they couldn't add. So the Board of Finance was, the members who were present were given instructions to go back and do that, and they returned in two weeks or whatever, and we would vote on this. No one asked for them to come back and try to revive the single stream, so I'm not supporting the thing that's labeled option two. Because we just voted on single stream a few weeks ago.
But I think we didn't really discuss at the town meeting a hybrid option for everyone, it was basically people wanted to pull the single stream out, they wanted to keep there were the two pieces, but no one really discussed at the town meeting a potential hybrid option. And I think in fairness to the townspeople, the ones that were there, and maybe ones that weren't there, but may potentially show up at the next town meeting. I feel, to respect the townspeople, we give, we refer both options forward for the town to vote on. I feel like we're doing a disservice if we only send one option. I feel like the townspeople should have a say in, if the Board of Finance was willing to put together these two recommendations, and it's still keeping the recycling center open, but also allowing for people who are now paying $20, well, almost, I don't know what the full amount is, but I know it's over $18 a month for recycling, I would think they would want to be onboard to this, it will extremely reduce their, their cost with that being that they pay every month, and I think in fairness to those people, they should have a say in what gets, you know, approved.
If it had passed at the town meeting, would you be bringing it back to give them this choice?
But if it had passed, we wouldn't be
You wouldn't ask?
If, if, I mean, because your issue here, it's under seven dash three forty-four. So at that town meeting, there was, I think the issues got a little conflated in that because what I heard is, don't close the recycling center, we want to keep it open. And single stream is not the right direction, it's bad for a number of reasons. But we took, there was, all the town meeting had the authority to do was reduce, not add. So we don't know ultimately what could have happened if they had unfettered rights. But the direction was to, I'm going to say the town leaders, is go back and figure it out and bring it back to us for consideration. What this is doing, and when I, and I apologize to the Chair of the Board of Finance, in my, for what I said last night, was that, you know, this board, this is a budget issue, this board is simply referring the matter to the town meeting, you're not deciding a single stream or not. That's for ultimately, the town meeting, when it approves this supplemental budget issue, can adopt the recommendation number three, which would include both, or if number one were not referred, and there was only number three, because number three includes both.
Number two is an option now, we eliminated number two.
The town, the town meeting could say, we don't want single stream, pull that out again. So all this is doing is putting the question before the town meeting and letting the town meeting make the decision, and because, again, well
Can I just simply, I agree with you, Bob, I really do, it was clear at the meeting that, I mean, I heard, you heard, that people don't want the recycling center to be closed, I mean, that seemed to be everybody that was there. And I did hear that people don't want single stream, and I also heard a lot of people who are very, much more than me, educated about this topic, and I was really impressed, you know, people who know a lot about other options that we haven't even touched on as a town, and that perhaps we should. I think that the, I don't know if anyone remembers, the very first gentleman who asked, who spoke, said, I'm confused, I thought this meeting was about learning about our options. And it sort of broke my heart to hear him say that, because I've been asking for months now to, if we could, you know, re-convene the group of people in town who are experts in this area, so that they could help educate the town, and we, and we have waited, we have waited instead of being provided with education on this very complex topic, we've been denied this opportunity to hear from people in town who know a lot more than I do, and probably a lot of people in this room. I do think it's a complicated issue, the issue of, you know, solid waste and cycling, it's, if you think it's easy, then, I mean, it's complicated. And I'm disappointed that we have not reconvened this committee to educate the town on options. I think waiting until we figure out what we're going to do is too late, because then, what's the point of learning about the options that are out there if we've already made a decision, and we've been denied this opportunity to be educated? It's been very disappointing for me that as a town, we refuse to give this information to people. And clearly, from the meeting, there are clearly people interested in this topic, and I'm sure, I didn't approach anyone, because but there are clearly people who are knowledgeable on this topic, and I'm sure willing to devote their time, if they went to the town meeting, I'm sure they'd be willing to to go to meetings to talk about how we're going to educate the town and what all the options are out there, so.
And you have that stuff on our website that people can refer to, to educate themselves, but
We also had a meeting before the town meeting.
That's not a reason to deny the town, the knowledge of the ad hoc committee, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, everybody knows some information.
There was a meeting, the annual town meeting, to discuss the recycling and the garbage, that people could have attended, you're right there.
And it was very restricted on what people were allowed to ask.
You're correct, you're correct, but you have a July one timeframe, and the question is, do you want to put the entire question before the town meeting and let them make a decision? Or do you want to limit the town meeting? That's really what you're deciding tonight, do you want to put the entire question before the town meeting and let the people decide at the town meeting, or do you want to limit the town meeting?
Yeah, I need to amend the item to just send option one.
I accept, I agree, I second that motion.
Can I? Are you allowed to make a?
You're the Board of Finance, you're the money that's
The intent here obviously was to completely restore the recycling center and make it possible for that committee, once it is reconstituted, to educate the public. But in, at the same time, to simultaneously allow for reducing the solid waste stream that's being picked up, and to get hard data, because the one thing about option one is not changing anything doesn't change anything, and things need to change.
We have a motion and a second, can we have a vote?
No, it's point of order, it's out of order.
Because we already made the motion.
No, no, not in first, last one, the statute is clear. The Board of Finance submits the recommendations to the town meeting, you don't have the authority to change their recommendations. You only have the authority to send it to town meeting or not. So that's, but you cannot
My amendment's unstable and
I second that amendment.
I just, my, to the Chair, it's out of order.
I don't see, if we don't have authority to make an amendment, then why are we having a meeting? Are we rubber stamping?
No, 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 no.
If we're rubber stamping, what's happening at the Board of Finance, there's no need to waste our time at this meeting.
This is the body that sends it to the town meeting.
As a rubber stamp.
As a rubber stamp, apparently, yeah, and you know what, I'd like to see some authority on that, if you can provide some authority on your position, I don't think
I highlighted it for you, it's in the statute, seven dash three forty-four.
This is not the annual budget either.
This is, this is a budget issue.
Yes, so any expenditure the Board of Finance majority has to be passed on to taxpayers, then we won't meet.
No.
There's no reason to have us meet.
You're
Time for the town to vote.
Is there any more discussion on the amendment?
I disagree with you, I think you're doing a disservice to the townspeople by just sending one option forward.
I understand, well, I hadn't voted on it already, regardless of how I feel about it, I would have sent it out to a vote, I think it's disrespectful to all those people that sat in the hard metal chairs for hours to basically say, I don't think you know who you're talking about, or, you know, whatever, 200 people at a town meeting, you know, enough. It's come up before in town, there's a group of people that wanted a new school years ago, and they had a referendum, and it got voted down, and they came back, and they wanted another referendum, at some point, you have to say, you're already asked, and they're hoping to have a different group of people or a different answer.
You know, if we didn't have over 10% of the townspeople already paying into single stream, I might might, I might agree with you, but when, when we have over 200 households that are already paying almost $19 a month, if not more, I don't, the tax or whatever it comes to, I find it a disservice to those residents to not bring both options forward to allow people to vote on it. Well, it's a service to the rest of the households in town, so. We, I'm really seriously afraid, because we were on a meeting, and the, with the state, and one of the gentlemen said, we could come down and tell you, well, if you're not going to do curbside recycling, we can tell you that you're also not going to do curbside trash, and then everyone is on their own. And the cost of that to do privately will be ridiculous.
Paula, you shouldn't threaten people with that, it is not a fact, it is not a fact.
I was on the meeting, and the gentleman said it.
No, no, it's not a fact, and people who are at the meeting would know that that's not a fact.
I mean, single stream could be revisited later, there's nothing magical about this particular time, we haven't been in compliance with that statute for years. And, you know, there are, there was a group, the Solid Wastes Recycling Committee, I think, years ago, was promoting it, and at the time, and we've got on the hand up, if you make it easier for people, more people will put it in the recycling container. And, you know, but of course, there was going to be a major increase in expenditure to the town because of the cost of these containers, and, and, and a whole curbside collection program, so big expense, but if people are lazy and not recycling all, they may recycle. At the time, trash cost as much, recycling cost as much to get rid of or more than trash, so that just killed it, because it was just going to be a super expensive thing. So I don't, I'm not against it, it might be the right way to go, but I think it needs to be looked into, we just voted on it, and
I just, I just want the record to include this, because again, I think, I think your action is in violation of seven dash three forty-four. If you don't refer the recommendations of the Board of Finance, the statute ends by saying the provisions of this section shall not be construed at preventing a town for making further appropriations upon the recommendation of its Board of Finance at a special town meeting held after the annual town meeting and prior to the laying of the tax, that's what this is. Board of Finance sends, we want to recommend this to the Board, to the town meeting. This is the body that sends it to the town meeting, you're not, you're not recommending it, you're simply taking the Board of Finance recommendations, you may disagree with them, but you're sending it to the town meeting, and it's up to the town meeting to decide, and they may agree with you completely, but that's what the statute says. And so I don't think you have the authority to change the recommendations of the Board of Finance, notwithstanding how much you may be in opposition to them.
The town can vote against this proposal.
Yeah, they want, they said, right.
No, they still, they can vote against option one, so it's the same.
But you're depriving them of the recommendations of the Board of Finance.
They could go online and look at the, at the meeting.
The only thing that would be, the only thing that goes to the town meeting is what this body says to them.
If, 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 if the whole thing passes, and the next town meeting votes down single stream again, the Board of Finance could meet the next night. Yeah, and they could recommend it, and apparently, according to you, we would have to send it back on a weekly basis.
No, because, because, no, that's not correct, because the statute is for the period of time, right, it's made at a special town meeting prior to the laying of the tax, that would be prior to the July one date, after the annual town meeting, so it doesn't go on infinitum. This is where something, something happens at your annual town meeting, and you have an opportunity to address it before the laying of the tax. And so there's this window And so there's this window before July one, so it would not go on in perpetuity and then the other statute, the language of the statute would uh trigger. If there was need for additional appropriation for greater than twenty thousand dollars, it's to any particular department. But this action of the board of finance is in accordance with seven dash three forty four. It's a special town meeting following an annual town meeting to address a budget issue. And this, what I'm saying, this body's charge is to take that recommendation and send it to the town meeting. I understand the issues, I may agree, I may disagree, it doesn't matter, but your charge is to send it to the town meeting. Uh, or you could vote not to send it to town meeting, right? But you can't change the recommendation, in my opinion, based on seven dash three forty four.
Why do you think we can vote to not send it to the town meeting if you just said we had to, we had to send it to the town meeting?
Because I can't tell you what to do, I can't tell you to follow, I can't tell you to follow the law. I can only give you my recommendation.
If this had said, if this had said item four and then item five, we could have voted down item five and not item four. I mean, you're, you're trying to.
No, what I, what I, and what I said, apologizes to the board of finance chair is, they could have just referred the one. Option with both, right? Because putting.
What you're saying, I could vote the whole thing down, but this is item four, has two options.
No, because.
If there was item four was this and item five was this.
Because it's it's a, it's a difference with it with 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 the meaning, is that if you vote to change the recommendation. That's an action you're not authorized, you're, if you vote not to send it to the town meeting, you're not changing the recommendations, you're saying, I'm not sending it to town meeting.
Well, I'm sticking with my amendment and if it is uh really felt to be illegal, the board of finance can meet again and. Have to be once again.
I agree.
There's nothing magical about, the single stream can be revisited at some time in future.
So you're amending to.
Eliminate option two, we're only referring option one to the um town meeting.
I second that.
And and I just want to say for the record that I'm not, I I I'm not opposed to even single stream. I'm objecting to the town not being given an opportunity to learn about these top issues. And that has been a fact, that people have been denied the opportunity to learn. So I am not against any of these options that are have been discussed or on the table, I've been fascinated with people in town who know a lot about this. And I've tried to educate myself, it's, it's not as easy as going on a website and reading this thing real quick for you. Very complicated stuff, if you want to know um really what's going on with the town and recycling. And so that, that's where I stand, I'm objecting to the rec, the denial of the opportunity that we should have had. At least since January, um, and at one meeting, board of select meeting, Paula said, well, I'll give you an update in next meeting, we've never got that.
But I, but I also had word said, I'm waiting to see how how this all pans out, so I know what we're educating people on.
That's a denial, okay, it's it's a denial of people to learn about current options that are out there, that's a denial. So that that's where I stand.
And I understand, I understand and respect that, I'm, I'm here, this is process, this is simply a process issue. And I'm just trying to clarify the process, it's not a substance issue, it's a process issue.
It's really in hindsight, so no blame is being laid, you know, and it, uh, but in hindsight, what I see is. The board of selectmen, whether it's with a recycling committee, you know, providing, you know, studying the issue, providing advice. The board of selectmen should have come up with the town policy, which then got evaluated by the finance board. This way, the finance board, the the town went out to bid and put stuff in the bid. It may have been one person put the bid specs together, making major changes in trash and recycling for the town. And then the finance board took those numbers and put it in there, so you're on, very few people were involved. Um, so in hindsight, it should have been the board of finance should have said, sorry, the board of selectmen should have gotten information, had public hearings. You're never going to make everyone happy, but decided what direction the town is going to go on this stuff. And then the finance board would be trying to figure out what we can afford and how to pay for it. This way, the finance board essentially is making the the solid waste policy for the town. What you're telling us is that, you know, you can only vote on the things they send you.
Again, this is a budget issue, the recommendations of the board of finance and the statute.
But but.
I I understand that, I understand.
But which board should be setting policy on how the town manages solid waste and recycling?
Well, in this instance, it would be the town meeting.
Well, which, which board should be deciding what gets sent to them?
It's, it's the statute, since this is a budget issue, okay?
But which thing should be budgeted?
Well, that's up to the town.
Should the town hire, should the town buy trucks and pick up trash with town employees, I mean, these are policy issues. That, but again, would have to be funded, but they're really not budget issues to start.
But they're ultimately up to the town meeting because everything comes.
Ultimately, but who would, who would set the policy in the first place?
Well, who sets the policy is the lead of the town meeting who votes on the budget, because if they voted out.
Who decides what to send to the town meeting to vote?
Depends on what statute you're referring to.
Who put the town vote together, what group put the solid waste ordinance together?
Before my time.
Well, before mine too.
Because it was, if you read the solid waste ordinance, it's all about directing people to the new C R R A plant.
Well, that thing we could revise.
We were under contract and we got penalized if we didn't send it there, so that's what all the ordinance is about.
Yeah, that that needs to be revised, um.
So that was thirty something years ago.
Yeah, yeah, um, all right, so we have the um motion and a second to eliminate option number two. Um, and refer only option one to the town meeting, is that my understanding? Correct. Okay, um, all in favor?
I.
Oppose, I am opposed, I feel like we're doing a disservice to the town. But, um, okay, now we need to actually vote, I am proposing because we have to work backwards with printer. And newspaper postings and whatever, uh, I am proposing Wednesday, June twenty sixth for the town meeting at seven o'clock. And we actually, I believe, will be able to have it here in the gym, they are, take a peek in the door before you leave, they are finishing the floor. So we shall, should be able to use um the gym for that meeting.
Will it be at seven?
It would be at seven, yes, correct.
Matter of first class.
Yeah.
Uh, there was a vote on the amendment, there was a vote to amend the motion, now you have to go on the primary motion.
Okay, um.
As a, so as a mandate.
Right, so they have to vote in the motion as a minute.
Okay, so we had, Gina, you had for discussion and Bob, you had seconded for discussion, so we have to vote on it as amended. All in favor?
I.
I.
I oppose. All right, so now we have the the um, I propose a motion for the twenty sixth of uh June, a Wednesday.
It's so Wednesday.
It's Wednesday, yes.
I I have no objection to the date, as long as you can get everything done before.
Well, that, I I picked the date and I worked my way backwards because based on the postal service and getting it to the newspaper. So the notice and everything, so we should, uh, we should be fine as far as the timeline.
May I ask a que, just a question of all of you, since we were um, we were arranging from. People from D E E P to come and talk about solid waste management and the different recycling alternatives and so on. Uh, would you still like for them to come to the town meeting, even though whatever they have to say is irrelevant?
It's a, I mean, public meeting, anybody can.
I don't think it's irrelevant, I would be in favor of inviting them and I think that. It it's a part of my quest to have be better education on this topic for myself and for, and to have it available for the town. I would say it would be great if someone from D E E P could come to the town meeting, I don't think it's irrelevant to have people learn about what's out there.
You might incite them, you're you're making a recommendation that's in violation of the law.
I I I.
If they want to come, they can come, I.
I know, and people can vote against.
I've been in contact with them and they are potentially going to, going to send someone, so I will, I will update them as to what will actually be. Be being voted on um at the town meeting and then they can certainly have their input um one way or the other. But can I at least vote on the date as um, did it in for second, did you second?
So moved your second.
Because I made the motion.
Okay.
Um, for the June.
For the day, yeah, okay, yeah.
All in favor?
I.
Okay, so we have the date situated and I will work backwards um with mailings and postings and all of the necessary um items at that point. Um, as this, as is the, this is a special meeting, there is no other business that can be conducted at this time. So I basically would need a motion to adjourn, so.
Second.
And, okay, and it is uh seven twelve. Okay, thank you, all those who attended, uh, via Zoom, uh, we appreciate it and enjoy the rest of your.